Okay. So let's go ahead and get started. I'll call into session the April nineteenth special work session of the Tuolotin City Council discuss next year's fiscal budget. And at that point, turn this over to city manager Cheryl Lambos and our finance dude, Don Hudson.
I love that. I love that. Yes, thank you. This has been a tradition for a number of years now to have a kind of a pre-budget workshop with the council before the before the official budget committee. So that you can have your stamp on some things, get a little preview. And then we usually have something that we want to talk to you about, and tonight is no different. So I will turn it over to Dawn, who has the entire presentation.
Oh, thank you, Sherilyn. So I'm going to share my screen here so that we can go through the presentation. The in the hard part, I'm going to try to expand out the amount of people I can see on my other screen if possible. And it's not going to let me. So. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. I thought this was kind of rather fitting that we are zooming into the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget. We did have a kickoff with the department heads about three months ago, in fact, actually exactly three months ago from today. So all of us have had fun for three months playing budget. I believe this year is not going to be any different than last year. A little aspect is that we will be doing the the Budget Committee meetings virtually. So I want to start off tonight and kind of talk about there's really two things on the agenda to talk about this evening. One is to give you that fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget update. And the second, I want to spend a few minutes at the end or towards maybe more than a few minutes talking about the American Rescue Plan. And what that means for Tuolotin, what we don't really know, which is probably the biggest picture right now, the things we don't know about the implementation of that. But I want to kind of talk about the general overview. And then get into kind of things that we're thinking as we go forward with that. Both of these items this evening are meant to stay at a very high level. You know, the intent is not to get down a lot of the weeds. I'll be more than happy to answer any of the questions you have. But we stay high level on the budget side because we really can't talk about specific dollar amounts of things or specific items. Until we get into the the delivery of the budget at the Budget Committee Committee level. And then the American Rescue Plan again, there's not, you know, it's still a very high level. And we'll get into both of these items. Obviously, the budget, when we get in the Budget Committee, we'll get into the more of the details there. And then on the American Rescue Plan, we will come back to you at a future work session to get more into those details. So tonight's really meant to be that kind of high level discussions on both of these items. But again, feel free to ask any questions as we go along. So a long, long time ago, as I said, it was three months ago that we we met to start this budget process. We were here about a year ago in the same process, but that does seem like a long, long time ago. We used to joke that March felt like the decade of the the teens, and then we got into April, a few shorter timeframe. It's gotten kind of fast, but it really was a long time ago. We also are still in a period of a little bit of uncertainty with the pandemic and the impacts that we're having on the city, our budget, and I'll get into those as we go along a little bit. But I came across this quote from Donald Rumsfeld, and it really felt kind of how I was feeling a little bit. There are known knowns, therefore there are things we know that we know. There are known unknowns. That is to say, there are things that we now know we don't know. But there are also unknown unknowns. There are things we do not know, we don't know. And I could tell you that in a lot of cases, that sure feels that way as we go along. There are more knowns, I think, this year than last year. But we are still in a state of flux in a few different ways. So a one great budgeteer once said, continue providing current services at levels you were providing them. That was a great budgeteer called Don Hudson. I'll pat myself on the back. I don't know if I'm a great budgeteer or not, but this was the budget premise that we gave the departments back on January nineteenth. That we really, you know, our mission at the city is to is to provide outstanding levels of service. And that is one thing that has been something that in my thirteen plus years here at the city, and I know long before that, has been the the standard for what we do, and that's provide quality service at high levels of service. And so we asked the departments to go into your budget process, doing the exact same thing. When I get into the expenditure side later in the meeting, I'm going to talk about kind of what's direction we gave a little bit related to that. But the base premise was continue providing those services at the at the current levels. So we started off with with revenues. For those of you that have heard a lot of by talks on budget before, or how we go about putting together budgets in the city is we really look at our ongoing picture first. We look at what our ongoing revenues are, and then we match our ongoing expenditures to those revenues. And we want to stay at what we call a positive alignment. Where our ongoing revenues exceed our ongoing expenditures. And then we want to spend just one-time monies that we have available, some of our reserve balances. Things like if we didn't spend in one year, some balances we have that are really one-time in nature. We want to spend those on our one-time expenditures, so capital items. We don't we just use those one-time revenues to pay for that. But we don't also fund ongoing services with one-time revenues because that's not sustainable. So we always look at those ongoing revenues first. So I do want to talk a little bit about some of our revenue picture for this year. The good news is that many of our revenue sources are still maintaining stability. That is, a number of them that has kept us going over the years, and we still are seeing a lot of stability in many of our revenue sources. Some of the ones that are a little different, and I don't want to say different when I start talking about property taxes. What I a year ago, I stood up in front of the Budget Committee, or I guess, sitting here in front of a computer in front of the Budget Committee. And mentioned that we were not anticipating much change in our property taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And we are seeing that trend. We are seeing that exactly happen. Our assessed value went up, our collections are staying pretty steady. I did a little analysis over the weekend and saw that kind of what we expected might happen is that we might have a little less collections in that first payment that's due in mid-November. And we may see people more spreading out their payments. I we are seeing a little bit of higher amount from that second payment than we have in past years, which just tells me there's a little bit of that spreading out. Now, what happens to our revenues picture when that does happen is people are taking less discount. Therefore, our revenues may increase a little bit. But you may see that timing of our cash flow. But the good news is we are trending along with the same amount that we are expecting in our property taxes. I anticipate that to continue going forward into the twenty one, twenty two budget. I am going to be a little more conservative in my assessed value growth. Partially because there's some things you've got put on hold, but but when I say the assessed value growth, we may have a higher assessed value growth, but I want to be a little conservative on in case we see that trend that we're seeing on collections change a little bit. Our revenues will be a little more conservative going into the budget, but I don't anticipate a lot of change in our property tax picture. I think we'll still continue to be a steady growth and still meet and exceed the budget that we put together in that area. One of the pieces that we have seen reductions in the last year plus is in our transient lodging tax revenue. Obviously, when the pandemic hit, and if you see that kind of goldish color line, you can see from February, March, April, that's fiscal year nineteen twenty, and that was the big drop when the pandemic hit. So the red line there is eighteen nineteen. That's what I would consider somewhat of our normal year. Obviously, nineteen twenty, we saw some fairly significant differences. We started towards the end of the fiscal year nineteen twenty, seeing a little bit of an uptick. But you can see nowhere near the levels from previous, from the last eighteen nineteen year. We are seeing the green line is the current year twenty twenty one. You see, between September and November, we have the the typical dip that happens in those winter months. And it's starting to trend back upward. I think the the one picture here is the February picture. We are not far off from eighteen nineteen levels, still far below the nineteen twenty level. But we are seeing a little bit of an uptick, I think, as people are starting to travel more. We are still I cut the revenue for the nineteen twenty budget for these items in half going into this year. I've I'm budgeting half of that return. So I'm anticipating higher than what we went into this year with. But it's still, I'm not budgeting back up to the levels we were pre-pandemic. Obviously, we want to see more months of activity, see what that looks like. But I am a little encouraged with that. What that February picture looks like and how it's not far off from past years. Our investment portfolio, in our last quarterly financial report a couple, about a month ago, I talked a little bit about our investment portfolio and that we are seeing these our rates drop. You can see the the red line there is the state investment pool where it about point six percent interest on those monies in our external monies that we have put with an investment advisor. We use an investment advisor to to invest. You can see that those are performing higher because of the mix we have, but you can see that that has been kind of steadily dropping. And as we have a investment matured from a higher rate, we invested in a much lower rate. We're going to see that trend come down a little bit again. But we're still hoping to keep it in in decent levels. But again, that's a significant drop in interest revenue that we've seen from previous years. Some of the other revenues that we are have seen some impacts and that we're continuing to watch, and I don't think we'll not sure whether we'll get to pre-pandemic levels or not. I think we're still being a little conservative in some of our revenue projections, business licenses. We have where some of those are still trickling in from the year. We aren't trending too far low on that. So I think what we've seen in some areas where businesses have gone out of business, others have been taking the place in some of those buildings. So we're kind of waiting to see, but I think we're going to be down a little bit on our business license revenue, but we are not down as much as I think some people would think we would be. Other items like our library fines, while that wasn't a big pot of money, obviously, we're not charging library fines any longer, so that's not in the budget. Recreation programs, I think the recreation parks rec department are doing a great job of planning for the summer. Whether will we get back to pre-pandemic levels? I think if, you know, if you ask Ross and Julie, they'll say we're hopeful. But again, that's kind of that unknown going forward as well. Marijuana tax, I think I mentioned before with the passage of measure one ten, we're losing about seventy thousand dollars a year in that marijuana tax monies. And that will not grow. It is a hard cap in measure one ten. And so the levels that are in the budget for next year will be the amount we have every year going forward. Otherwise, as I said, mostly, you know, our revenues are fairly are staying stable. So our ongoing picture for revenues is still looking pretty positive, and I feel pretty good about where that's at. But one other item I would like to talk in this is typically the kind of thing we talk about at this meeting is the proposed utility rates. On the water side, the we are still continuing with the master plan recommendations of four point two five percent increase, and we did increase those levels in twenty twenty one. On the sewer side, just as a reminder, the sewer bill is broken up into two, you know, there's four total components, but there's two components to a sewer bill. There's your base charge, and then there's a usage charge. And the usage charge is based upon a winner average usage on a residential account. And I believe it's November through March or April, we take the average usage during those months, calculate a winner average, and then that's the usage rate that is forced on charge on the sewer bill for the year. Clean water services and the city both set independent independent rates. Clean Water Services is responsible for a portion, a large portion of the sewer system, the larger pipes, the distribution to the plant and so forth. And then there's a smaller part of the system that the city is responsible for. So Clean Water Services sets rates based upon their needs to manage their part of the system, and that's the regional charges. And there's a regional base charge and a recent regional use charge. And in the city side, we've set rates based upon what it what we need to maintain and provide services to our portion of the of the system, and that's the local base charge and use charge. So the clean water services side, when I was in front of you in the fall, and then again in January, I talked about Clean Water Services did not end up raising the rates at all during fiscal year twenty twenty one, and the city did the same. And Clean Water Services had told us that they would need to have a little bit higher of a rate starting in July one that they would have had if they had raised rates during this fiscal year. Typically, they would have been about a three percent increase for sewer rates. They are raising sewer rates at about at a four and a half percent rate increase for this year, and that's reflected in the regional base and regional use charge. And you can see it's about a dollar seventy one for both those on an average residential home. On the city side, we talked about that we would not need to raise it above what we had already projected in the master plan. And the master plan called what we would have done this year was a fifteen percent rate increase, and that's what's built into this these numbers. And you can see it's a dollar forty one total or dollar fifty one total on the city side for a total of three dollars and twenty four cents rate increase projected for the sewer side effective July one. On the stormwater side, again, it's the regional rate set by Clean Water Services for their portion of the system of the regional stormwater systems. The local side, what we need to maintain the stormwater facilities in the local side is set by the city of Tuolotin. Clean Water Services will be raising their stormwater fee five point one nine percent. The city has a four percent increase on our sites. You'll see the stormwater rate. Well, it's projected to go up forty four cents on a average residential monthly utility bill. On the road maintenance side, the road utility fee is indexed to the same rate that the county sets for the transportation development tax. That is the same formula that we have in our ordinance for an automatic indexing. We don't have those numbers from the county yet. So we have a placeholder of three percent in right now, and it was, I think, three point three six last year. So we feel that three percent is is a good rate to show until we get that that amount. So that's another seventeen cents on an average residential utility bill. So all those those four rates going up will change the average residential utility bill, five dollars and thirty two cents. Now, you notice that I do have the parks utility fee on here. What I don't have is the dollar amount in there. And I know that the last meeting, there was direction to come back with a resolution on the next council meeting, so next Monday night. Talk of the five dollars per per bill. Because that resolution hasn't been passed yet, I did not include it on here, but obviously, we could do the math. If you do pass five dollars on Monday night, it would be a ten dollar and thirty two cent change to the average residential bill. But I just wanted to show it this way, and then you know that that's if you do pass that at your meeting next Monday, that would just be added to this picture. On the expenditure side, again, you know, we asked the departments, we gave them that premise of continuing to do what you're doing now at the levels you're doing them. But we did things a little differently this year. In past years, we've given them told them, you know, within a small percentage, if it's things changing that, you know, program that into your budget, and we'll talk about it in the meetings that all the departments have with Sherilyn and I. This year, our direction was a little different due to the really the unknowns that we still had going into the into the budget year and with the pandemic. So we asked them only to include increases for items that were outside of our control, things like our dispatch contract with WACA. They set that rate. We have no control over that rate. Utilities, so PGE, Northwest Natural, all the utilities that we pay, you know, those are out of our control. Other contractual obligations, you know, go ahead and put those in. And then known increases in cost of if we have something that's currently was a line item detail. So the departments have line item details that they put together. If there are known increases that we know about, then we told them, go ahead and program those in. But we also asked them not to substitute new expenditures. So if they had an existing expenditure that was no longer needed, the direction was don't substitute anything new in that place. It's very easy for the say, in my budget, I had a thousand dollar item that I no longer need, but hey, I might have the need for the thousand dollar usage somewhere over here. I would just program that in because my budget won't change. We asked them not to do that. We really wanted to see kind of just what is out of our control. Or known things. But we did say that let's start there. Start there. Let's have our discussions. Let's look at our revenue picture. Let's look at where all the budgets come in with that in mind. And then if there is additional monies that we find available, if we have additional revenues, what kind of things would you have added into your budget? You know, kind of like that thousand dollars I was just talking about. If the money was available, what would you have done? What would you have put in? So we asked them to put together those lists and have that available available for discussion. We did also say, you know, we know there are items that you want to put together an ad package for. And I'll talk about some that were put in there, things that would, you're not doing now, but it would be an ad. Maybe it's a capital item. Maybe it's a a new service. Those kind of things, don't program that in, put together what we call an ad package. And we can, again, we can talk about those. So there are some things that were programmed in based upon after we went through our book, kind of that base that we asked them to come to the table with. So let me talk about what some of those items were that did get added in the proposed budget that you'll see with the in the Budget Committee will see next month. Funding for the Climate Action Plan. That was proposed. We know we have some people working on the the scope of that, and so we have put funding in for a climate action plan in the next year. There are a couple of different items in the Stone Ridge Park area. One is that historically, we've had a neighborhood cleanup up there. We've been working with Republic Services on how to do that. There are some costs that would be the city would would bear, and so we are programming that in this year as well. And then the continuation of the Stone Ridge Park renovation design. So phase two of the design that came out of all the work that Parks and Rec and the community did in that area. So those two items are in the in the proposed budget. Other parks and recreation items that are were add packages that are programmed in, the Veterans Memorial Site Design. So continuing again, that project moving forward and working on the site design for the Vets Memorial. And then, you know, if you remember, the last time we held the pumpkin regatta, we expanded it to a Friday night event. And then the way off on Friday night, and a lot of good things there. So we are funding that Friday night again. We're we're very hopeful that we will have a pumpkin regatta again this this coming October. You know, of course, again, not knowing what it looks like, but the plan is to hold a Friday night event as well. So that's programmed in this year. And then there were three items in the Police Department that were programmed in. And I chief still feel free to jump in if I don't, if I miss something on any one of these. I think one of the big ones is a mental health clinician. And that would be in partnership with Washington County Public Health as well as the city of Tigard, and maybe possibly, Chief may know more about this, but also the city of Sherwood may be partnering in on this. And the idea would be to have a mental health clinician, a masters level clinician would be available riding along with a full-time officer and would be able to respond to need to a call when there's a mental health clinician need on there. So Chief, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that, but we're excited to have that, you know, taking a step in that direction.
You nailed it, Don. Good job.
Thank you. The second would be the digital forensics lab. So Washington County has a digital forensic lab, which gives us the opportunity when we have computer or other digital devices that are taken during a crime or something that the officers may take into evidence. And we have a team at the county that can has the expertise to go through those devices and get some of the items out of that that is important in the investigation. Obviously, you can imagine with technology, the way it is these days, that that is a very busy division. And there's probably higher needs. So a number of the entities around have decided to band together to hire an additional FTE to assist with this, and our share of that is being funded for this year. Again, Chief, is there anything that I missed there that you'd like to add?
Yeah, it's it's a county-wide resource that would be available to all the departments. It's a small team. Currently, there's three people doing this type of work. It takes them a tremendous amount of training to get up to speed to where they can testify in court. And just about any type of investigation, we do now have some type of technology component. So it's a growing need, and the resources are very limited on who can do this type of work. So as Don said, it's going to be a cost that's going to be spread out evenly throughout the different jurisdictions in the county.
Thank you, Chief. And the last thing that there is funding for is to begin a body worn camera program. And I'm sure the chief will have more details on that when we get into the, I'll ask him to give more of a detail on the budget process, or there may, I'm sure there'll be an opportunity somewhere here in the near future about that. But they have been looking at body worn cameras and what that program would look like. And so they've put in a ad package, and that is projected and proposed to be funded for the upcoming fiscal year. The good news with where our budget sits right now is we have a solid budget that would be bringing forward to the Budget Committee. We are in a positive general fund alignment. It's not a huge alignment, a positive number. But it is positive going forward, which I feel really good about and thankful to the departments, all the city staff that works on the budget throughout the year and does such a great job providing outstanding services at a really cost-effective way that is good stewards of the public funds. Their work in continuing to look at their budgets has allowed us to continue to have that positive alignment, and we're going into fiscal year twenty one, twenty two in a positive alignment. And I feel really good because not a lot of cities around us or across the country can stand up and say that type of thing. So I'm very happy with that. I'm very proud of the group people I work with and the work they do to put us in that position where we can stand up and say that we have a solid budget going forward. One additional change, this you will see in the budget document is performance measures. As you know, that we participate in the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. We're very honored to receive that every year, and it is something that a lot of work goes into our budget document to get this award. Going forward, they are going to now require performance measures in the budget document. It's something that has been mentioned to us that you know, you really should have them, but it wasn't a requirement before. It is now going to be a requirement. So we asked the departments to start that process this year and providing performance measures. But what we really wanted was simple and meaningful performance measures. We wanted them to be out outcome-based. We wanted to tell a story about the the work that departments are doing to provide good outcomes instead of just output. And so one types of thing that we would see is percentage of help desk requests resolved within four work hours. You know, we can determine what that percentage is, and it can show the quality of work that IS, the Information Services Department, is putting to respond to those help desk requests. And you'll see when you get the budget document, there's a lot of quality outcome based performance measures the departments have put in. It can show you the different types of work that everybody's doing. What we didn't want was things like hold twenty-three city council meetings per year. Well, that's an output one, but I also call it a duh. It's in our it's in our charter and so forth of that we will hold council meetings. You You have two council meetings a month, minimum uh every month, except for December, you have the one. So you add that all up, it becomes twenty-three. It's a very easy measure and, and people will put those measurements in to say, look what we did. We asked the departments not to put in things like that and uh they didn't. So you'll see, I think, some really good measures going forward, but you will see that as a different uh picture this year. At that, uh, Bear, I don't know if you wanted to, to break this up a little bit and talk about the, the budget, if there are any questions on that before we get into the, the American Rescue Plan or just wait till the end.
I'd wait till the end.
Okay, then I will continue on, you get to listen to me some more. Also, the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one was passed uh by the House and the Senate. It was signed into law by, by President Biden on March eleventh. And that's, you obviously have pretty large uh package, one point nine trillion dollars. There's a lot of pieces to it. This is what I call the alphabet soup of the types of programs that are included in it and the types of funding that is available beyond what some of the ones I'll talk about tonight. I purely show this just to twist your brain, there will be an acronym test at the end. So uh study this for the next three seconds before I change the screen. One, two, three, goodbye. Let's break it down a little bit smaller and easier chunks. So the fiscal recovery funds was three hundred and fifty billion dollars for state and local governments. It's uh, it's non-competitive funding, competitive funding. It goes to states, counties, cities, tribes and territories, of which a hundred and ninety-five point three billion dollars is to the states and to Washington DC. And a hundred and thirty point two billion dollars goes to local governments like City of Tuolton, the county and the other cities around us. Twenty billion to tribal governments and there's a small chunk to other entities that fall into the fiscal recovery funds. Other provisions that are in this bill, uh you see on the, the right there, things like the ten billion dollars for a coronavirus capital projects fund. Uh, there's fifty-eight point two billion transportation and infrastructure. Twenty-five billion in emergency rental assistance under housing. Uh, there's all these other different pots of money that provide funding beyond just what's the state and local government. And where this will be important, as I go through a little bit, is these are some pots of money that beyond what programs we may provide, uh, our, our community, our residents, our businesses and others would be able to tap into beyond that. So there's a lot of different programs that are going to be going on around us. Um, this is more of a kind of a, I, I like this graphic, it's kind of a pie chart of some of that other funding. So you can see some of the bigger chunks. Uh, of course, there's a hundred and sixty-four billion dollars for schools built into this uh package, eighty-eight billion for public health, ninety-eight billion for the transportation. So there's some big ones, uh, but there's also, you know, three billion dollars for economic development. While that, I say a small one, three billion dollars is not small, but when you compare it to a hundred and sixty-four billion, it, it's fairly small piece. But you can see there's many slices of the pie beyond uh the uh fiscal recovery funds that have some public sector relevance uh for, again, people that we might serve. So let's talk about a little bit of the types of things beyond the fiscal recovery funds that provide two different areas, so individuals, businesses and not, not-for-profits. Beyond what we might put together under fiscal recovery funds or us, this county, other cities around us, the state, uh, there's these other programs, the HUD Emergency Rental Assistance, the LIHEAP, like Lehe, Lehe, Household Energy and Water Assistance, the Utility Assistance Programs, uh Restaurant and Bars, Veteran Affairs. You can see there's a number of different other programs that will, are available under the American Rescue Plan uh beyond just the fiscal recovery funds. The one thing I do want to mention on the utility assistance programs, that money, there's a large amount of money as part of utility assistance in the, in this act. We don't have any direct allocation for those funds. The county, we're like under CARES Act, the county took some of their funds for utility assistance. The utility assistance programs are being funded to the states and then the state will allocate it out likely to not-for-profits. Uh, to, I, you know, I'm just going to throw an example, might be community action in our area, might get funded through the state and then they would offer the program. So there's a lot of unknown there, but that is one of those types of programs that are funded separately and directly to others besides the local government. Uh, and the economic development and regional collaboration, again, beyond just programs that might be put together by us, the county, the state, there's these other opportunities uh for economic development uh with these, through these other funding sources. Uh, again, infrastructure, the schools, transportation entities. You see, there's a large number of different entities that uh will be providing funding that can assist in these areas. So what does this really mean for the, the city? So we will be getting direct funding. Uh, our, it is part of a direct funding formula. And our amount, and I say currently at five point six seven million dollars because that is continually being tweaked until that money is actually go out, it could be tweaked. Now, I can say that our allocation has not changed since I got first wind that this was coming to us. Um, but until we get those first funds being sent out, uh, I, I'll say currently, but we are in line to get five point six seven million dollars. It is broken up into two separate payments, two point eight three five million this year. And for, as these funds, the, the US Treasury has sixty days from the bill signing to send money out. Entitlement cities and entitlement areas, so the city of Hillsborough, the city of Beaverton are entitlement cities. They will get it direct funding from the federal government. Our allocation will be sent through the state. They have to have it to the state by May tenth. And then the state has thirty days to turn that around to send the funds to the city. That date would be by June ninth. They have no ability to change that amount, check, put requirements on it. Uh, it is just the paper trail or the money trail of, for where that's going. So we will see two point eight three five million dollars uh sometime before June ninth. The remaining amount is no earlier than one year from the first distribution. So my understanding of that is no earlier than May tenth of twenty-twenty-two. The Treasury will send out the remaining funds to the state of Oregon. And I believe that at the state will then have the thirty days beyond that to send us our second payment. And the spending deadline on, on these funds is not until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So we have three plus years, almost four years to fully expand this money. And one of the big things that I'm hearing, and I'll talk about this in a sec as well, is there's not a need to just rush and put things in place. This is a long haul thing as well. You know, we don't have that information of what pandemic, how this is, how long this is going to be, how long these impacts uh will be felt by our community, by our business community, uh, by the city, by a number of other people. So it's not like we have to get this out in the next thirty days, sixty days. Uh, we have some time to strategically put in place what, how we want to spend these monies. So we want to really maximize the available funding options from those external agencies. All that alphabet list that I had there, there's a lot of opportunities for our own funding as well as other funds. So we really want to look at that regional collaboration, that regional cooperation. Take a look at what the state's doing, take a look at what the county is doing, take a look at what the cities around us are doing. Are there opportunities to collaborate and cooperate and put together larger programs or programs that will be more meaningful, more impactful by not just trying to do our own little thing and all of us being our own individual silos? Again, we can decide our programs to help individuals, we can help businesses, we can help not-for-profits using those funds or those monies that are earmarked for those other specific purposes that are out there. So again, there's opportunities for us to help a wide range of people utilizing different avenues, different pots of money in figuring out what the most impactful way of, of helping out and assisting with these funds and others. One of the things we're really going to want to do is make sure we have the right balance between complying with our, the federal and local guidelines and, and putting things into place that are too restrictive or too burdensome. And I think we saw a little bit of that with the CARES Act funding in some programs. Uh, you know, figuring out way to, to guide, to follow this guidance, the guidance that was out there. And really, and I think in my opinion, part of the reason that uh the Utility Assistance Program, we didn't spend as much money under that program as we would have liked countywide, is there were a lot of restrictions on it. And some came from feds and some were local. So we really want to have that right balance when, whatever we do, whatever we go forward with, we want that balance. We want to be able to manage the program as well. I mean, it's, we don't want something that's so large and so burdensome, so uh bureaucratic that it's hard to manage. And we might see what we saw with the CARES Act is the federal guidance changed see uh multiple times during the timeframe from uh March and April to December. And so we started some programs under one set of guidance. And before it was over, the guidance kept changing. So we really want to put programs in place as well that are flexible to meet potential shifting guidelines and guidance. So what do we do to need to be ready to receive our funds? Well, I think there's a, there's a number of things we need to do. Uh, we need to first understand the full range of the funding sources, what those options are and what our spending strategies may be. What I don't have on our fiscal recovery fund program, I don't have guidance from the US Treasury yet. They have not released it. Uh, they're working on it. We are told to, we, to anticipate that before they send out that first uh pots of money in May, May tenth, uh, the guidance will be out. But we don't know what that is yet. Uh, one, the types of things that that guidance will tell us are not only things that we can spend on, but what we can't use those funds for. Uh, how we, how we determine the amounts for some of those. For example, uh, revenue recovery, a portion of the funds for this allow for revenue recovery uh of so city fund revenues that we lost due to COVID. Uh, and so we could recover some of those revenues using this pot of money. How do we, how do we, how do we determine that amount? Well, what I'm hearing is we would take our twenty nineteen fiscal year uh actuals and compare that to our fiscal year twenty and see what levels are, are down. And then we have to make the case that it was COVID, they're down because of COVID. Now, how do we do that? Again, I, I have ideas of how I would do that, but the guidance will tell me how that has, that can be done. So until that guidance comes out, there's a lot of unknowns and we're all, I, I've seen this on different communications and webinars, a lot of things I've been in lately, everybody's scrambling with that same thought process. Again, you know, we want to understand what those purposes, what's eligible, what's not, what constraints we have. Um, and that's the unknown as of right now as well. Uh, but we really want to do, have a strategic approach to how we utilize these funds. As I mentioned, we, we have, it's not, the deadline for using this is not the end of this calendar year. It's a few calendar years out. Uh, you know, we want to strategically determine how we want to go about putting programs in place and looking at other pots of money and, and other resources around us. So this was a, a thing that was in a couple of different webinars that I participated in other think tanks. This, it, it, now is the time to think broadly and strategically about what our community's needs are and how we can meet those needs with uh our funding under the FRF, but also these other pots of money and how, you know, we can all come together, be really strategic about it. Uh, which is why I haven't put anything together yet to come forward to the council on a work session till kind of we get some of these things together, we can have a good discussion and then we can start that strategic uh dialogue. Uh, I got this from a readiness checklist on uh, from one of the webinars. And I thought this was really kind of what's ahead for us. We, I can't stress enough that we need to review the eligible uses for the funding before we look to make any decisions. Uh, we want to look at all that alternate, alternative funding from other agencies for those specific needs and projects that we feel are important. We want to identify uh key community constituents who will benefit or should benefit from use of these funds. And then again, formulate that strategic funding plan that will establish those priorities and aligns it with what we want to do and what the direct allocations and those, uh, what I call indirect allocations from other federal agencies. I think that was the time to really come up with a good strategic plan. I will be back in front of you in the near future uh to have, start that discussion when I have more information, when I can really kind of talk through how we can use the funds, what we can, can't, but also information I have about some things being uh done around us so that we can really maximize uh this, this program and this pot of money and maximize the funding that's available around us as well. At that, um, that's as much as I'll talk right now. And I will stop sharing my screen and answer any questions.
All right, so one thing I'll do before I start uh opening the floor for questions is, uh, as Don pointed out, um, discussion with all the mayors and with uh County Chair Harrington is, uh, most cities are waiting uh to see what happens with the money like Don says, because we're really not sure what the restriction is going to be. But the big thing we're waiting for is coordination. Like Don said, you know, we want to coordinate with the state and the county on any of our programs because we, we don't want to duplicate efforts. And as Donna's saying, we don't have, we don't want to create things in isolation. There's no rush and as uh Don said, so I think most of the left, you know, two parts of left are going to be coordination and our vision with what we want to do with the money. Um, so I, I ask people to have patience with that and to think about it. Uh, we might have to wait to see what programs the state implements and what Washington County implements and Clackamas County uh before we decide what we're going to do. Uh, because again, we don't want to create duplicate programs and uh create confusion. So with that, that's just a comment that the mayor's discussing and the county chairs, questions for Don. That's for Brooks.
Thank you very much for the presentation and um I, just since we're talking about the recovery, the rescue plan information, um, I have gone to quite a few seminars about this. And another thing they talked about a lot was since there's those other buckets of money too, to spend, spend money that are allocated for special things on those things and use the, the rescue plan money last. The other thing that they really suggested because it's such a historic lift for municipalities to get money like this as we do spend it to um make sure that we go on social media and we talk about how we're spending it so the people understand what we're doing and so that there's more confidence in the community around how we're helping the community actually recover. And, you know, in my mind, it's easy to see some things like we lost revenue with tourism, you know, with the hotel tax and things like that. So there's these simple places to plug in where um uh not being in as much debt and not having to lay people off. And those types of things are things that I'm already thinking about. And I know that we're waiting for the Treasury to give us traction, but um uh, I just, I, I think that's pretty much all I've got. I just want to say that I appreciate that we're in really good standing as a city and the work that you do, Don and, and everybody on the team. Um, and the fact that we're in a place that we can look at climate action. And I guess the one in other, in the other new programs additions in, even in this time. And I guess the one um question I had when I looked at the environmental, with those subsections of money, those other buckets. Question I had when I looked at the environmental with those subsections of money, those other buckets, those other buckets are very interesting to me. If things like the ice storm. And other environmental impacts that costs our city money even with the fires. In the past and in the future, if that environmental bucket, if those types of things fit into something like that. I know that we had a lot of expense on trees and. And, you know, the city staff, staffing, all that. And so that was one of my, my questions that came up.
We will definitely be looking at all, all buckets. I'm not sure whether, how much of that environment will be part of this plan, but, you know, again, until we get the guidance on all that, but I mean, we're going to look at. Every bucket we can for potential funding for different things. And then look at our fiscal recovery funds as well. So, you know, that's part of why we're suggesting being strategic. Give us the time to look at all that, all the different places that money could be coming from to do the things we need to do and want to do.
I totally appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions for Don? Make sure I can see everybody. I don't know if I can.
Everybody wave.
I think yes, so. All right. Hey, Chris. Other questions for Don. Council Hillier, there you go.
Thank you. I'm wondering, I didn't see in there how much the counties will get. So you indicated what cities will get. You know, Hillsborough, Beaverton, but how does that look at the county level, please?
I don't, I can look it up because the hundred and thirty point two billion is to all local governments, including counties. And I don't, and I don't know if the mayor, Sherilyn, in any of our regional conversations recall the number the county's getting. I could look it up. I don't have it off the top of my head.
The biggest question I have, thank you very much, is are they, is, are the county's governments included? Because I understood you to say just cities and so I was just.
Yeah, Washington County is getting a good amount of money. Some reason like a hundred million sticks in my head or something, it's, it's fairly large.
I think it, my, the, the number that's in my head is like a hundred and eighty. For Washington County. I don't know about Clackamas County.
Other questions?
It's not a question, but I just kind of wanted to riff off of something that Don, Don mentioned and that. Has been a priority for us and he talked about earlier in this, in this presentation is. Us allocating one-time revenues to one-time expenses and ongoing revenues to ongoing expenses and. I know that you all share this value, but we certainly don't want to create. Ongoing expenses. Associated with our rescue plan money. So because it's not ongoing revenue, right? It's, it's. It's kind of an infusion, but we want to be careful that we don't. Set ourselves up for the future of, of spending money and then not, not getting, not getting it ongoing. So. Maybe that's to the point of being strategic about it.
Other questions? I've just got one question, kind of point to remind folks every year when we do the community grants. We always say we should allocate more money to community grants. Don, is it still at thirty thousand in the budget?
I think it's forty.
Forty. So last year when we did it, remember, folks were like, you know, we need to increase that and, you know, we should talk about it at budget time. So I'm just. Reminding folks, is that something you want Sherilyn and Don to look at, about a possible increase? If, if possible, in a community grant program. Council Brooks.
I, that's another question I have as far as, especially since it's yearly. Some of those buckets of money can go to nonprofits, so. I guess my thing is how do we think strategically, strategically around that and then also. Discuss if we want to do. I guess my thing is. I think that there might be increased money too from this money for community grants that we could tap into. And if the next infrastructure jobs bill passes, that that, some of that money would be ongoing. So. I don't know how anyone else is thinking about those thoughts, but that's. You know, that's playing into how I think about that. It's hard for me. To say a number without looking at the budget, but we have talked about increasing those community grants. There might be opportunities and. There definitely is need and good work being done.
As Sherilyn just mentioned, I don't want to use any of the federal dollars to increase it, but have to be. Come from somewhere else. I was just bringing it up because every year. You know, we hear it every year when we award the money that we should have a bigger pot of money to give out. And this is the time to think about it and get in the budget now. So. You know, I'm just asking Sherilyn and Donna to say, is there any room? If there's not, the answer is no for this year because, you know, revenues aren't going to be. As much as we thought because of COVID, but, you know, maybe we just wait a year, get past COVID and discuss it again next budget cycle.
I guess my question is why wouldn't we have federal like, like we did with the business recovery money? If it's recovery money, the opportunity when not for recurring or maybe into an established budget, but. Money that we could put into community organizations that isn't. Ongoing money, but it is money that we use for helping. You know, like some of the seminars I've gone to is for youth and family, helping some of these. Places that have been really hurt or have had to have a lot of social distancing. Hire temporary staff or be, create programs that are more effective during these times or. Help people, help those organizations recover in this moment. Not ongoing, but use it as specific money when those directions come through, which should be. Before May tenth and they disperse it, I hope.
It's a good point that, you know, we could just leave our grant program alone and then. When we decide the strategic part of how we're going to spend the money, maybe it's a one-time thing, using federal dollars to give additional funds out to. Not-for-profits who help us out in Twalton, serving the folks. Here in town with their needs. I'm fine with that too. I just want to bring it up because every year it's brought up. And but it sounds like this might be an opportunity where we use federal dollars and. Might have even bigger bang for the buck with federal dollars than we do with our, you know, our forty thousand. So that's a good point. Other questions? Go ahead, Don.
I just want to answer Counselor Hillier's question. Bates being the overachiever, the, he is, while we were talking about it, looked it up and sent me a chat saying it's a hundred and sixteen million dollars. For Washington County.
Other questions for Don or Bates doing the background?
I don't talk while he's drinking money or drinking water.
There's no other questions. Nice presentation. On the, I guess for Chief. So on the body cameras, do we have a plan? In place? Because I haven't, this is the first time I've seen it, a plan in place, how to use them, all the. Regulations on storage, retention, do we have that already?
Luckily, you know, the technology's been around for a few years, so there's some others that have taken advantage of that and have worked through some of the hurdles that we will have to face. When we, when we go down that road and even the state has helped us out. There's some laws that talk about when. Video can be released, when it can be released, when it needs to be redacted. Yes, storage. So policy is a very important piece of that. So we've got a lot of plans in place for moving ahead right now. In anticipation of a program coming to be at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
But I guess I would, I would say to that, my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief. If you allocate the funds in the budget starting July one, it's not a light switch that will go on July first. We've got. We've got work to do, to put into place, but the funding is an important component of then moving forward this fiscal year.
Yeah, there are a lot of moving parts to a, a program like this, which will require, yeah, in addition to policy work, but just a lot of training with staff. Publicizing a program like this to our community as well. So there's still some work to be done.
Any other questions? Looks like you're getting off easy here, Don.
I like that. I was, you know, I was hoping to have everybody out by six. We had it scheduled to six thirty, but.
Her hands up. She's, she's, she's going to throw you the.
No, no, I just want to reinforce the, the talk that we've had. Have been around two years already that we, we've heard about the grants, the local community grants. I just want to reinforce the, I'm in favor of that of. I don't know, we've always talked about it and you're right, Mayor, that we always say. We can add a little bit more so we can give out a little bit more and, and I don't know if we do it or not, or we forget every time we meet. But just want to reinforce that idea and the thought and that I mean.
Anything else? That's it. Jeff looks so enthused over there.
I kept him awake tonight, which that's always a good thing too, so.
All right. Anything else? Oh, Council Hillier.
Sorry, thank you. So I, I just want to reiterate that the, the science. The STEAM Award that we were not able to give this last year because of the lack of finances. I don't know where that potentially could fit. In how this, it's probably not the community grant, but if there were a way that even if that. You know, cycle is still down, that that could be honored in this budget cycle somehow. I would like to see us be able to talk through that.
Okay, the timing on that is that. So you won't see any award in the upcoming budget because what we, it would have been awarded now and paid after July one. So what you'll see there and then of course, next spring, we'll look at what everything looks like. And so hopefully, like you said, hopefully. We're sitting here, a year from now, we'll be proposing to have, have funds available for a scholarship.
Ideally, maybe get some money, you know. Some federal dollars to get into the account to start building your, just, you know, earnings off of maybe possibly.
I'll just point out, there's a lot of legal issues with that because it's a, scholarships are sometimes not. Deal with when, when it's a city government that's, that's awarding them. So there are some legal issues that go along with those type of programs.
Well, there are some ideas I have. Maybe we could think about, talking about that.
All right. Well, thank everyone for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Sky's not as blue as it used to be, but it's still nice out. It's not raining, so. Get out there, enjoy it. And we'll see you all again soon. Have a good evening, be safe.
Thanks all.